The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fock, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Roll?
Here.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. All right, the first thing we have on the agenda here is public comment, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, public comment. I open it to public comment. See no public comment. I close it. This is a public hearing quasi-judicial. Application number A-15 dash, a bunch of zeros, two submitted by law firm Rooney and Rooney appealing the planning and zoning board decision on interpretation of the city code pertaining to guest houses and transient quarters. And a second part, application A-15, five zeros and a three submitted by law firm Rooney and Rooney appealing the planning and zoning board decisions on interpretation of the city code pertaining to guest houses and transient quarters.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to inquire if the parties would mind combining the two because I think it's the same question in both cases.
Is that agreeable? You come forward and both sides and tell us, please.
That is agreeable. We spoke about this prior to this proceeding beginning, and I do believe we agreed to consolidate it. And I believe there will be an argument as to one minor issue with respect to one of the cases, but they will be substantially the same.
Yes, that's correct. Both arguments are the same with one substantial difference between the two that when I bring that issue up, I will address it at that time. The council has no problem with that, of course.
All right, so they're joined. So that brings us to disclosure by council members of any ex parte communications, if any, including site visits, that might affect the affected members. For myself, I have not visited the site. I have not done any research on it. I think it is known that I generally support neighborhoods and that I believe neighborhoods should be that, not a place for rental, so I reveal that. Any other council members?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then I think we have to swear in, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Is anyone testifying this morning? We're going to swear in en masse? No one? Okay.
Sounds like it's all argument.
Big pardon?
It's all argument rather than evidence.
All right. All right, and are there any exhibits, it says, diagrams, photos, that should be entered?
There are. Ms. Fock does have four separate documents that one incorporate as exhibits, and I do have a copy for each council member of Mr. McGary's interpretation of the Fitz and Wagner matter.
And I stand corrected, those matters would be evidentiary in nature.
Are these the additional information that we've received on the dais today?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that brings us to panel's presentation, I believe. Mr. Comment? That'd be, go forward, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Rota Beck. I'm from the law firm Rooney and Rooney. The attorneys of record for the appellants in this case, which is Charles Fitz, Kent Wagner, Charles Wagner, and Gabriel Wagner. As discussed before the presentation today, it's a consolidation of the both issues because the arguments pertain to both cases except one important factual issue, which I'll address after, I think at the conclusion of the arguments as they pertain to both cases. The first thing I do want to say is that I do object to this hearing going forward pursuant to the Vero Beach Municipal Code of Ordinances, Section 2-303. In 2-303, it provides that an appeal must be made to a designative administrative authority. And then for the purposes of this article, and I'm quoting your code, it says, "Designative administrative authority means the city official, department head or director or his designee having jurisdiction and responsibility for the administration of the Code, ordinance, rule, regulation, the interpretation, or application of which is contested in the code enforcement action." That's exactly what's going on. We're contesting the interpretation application of the code provisions in the code enforcement action. And further reading in 2-303, such term includes the city manager, city council, and designated city boards in the exercise of their jurisdiction and authority to hear and determine appeals from the administrative decisions pursuant to this code. I think 2-303, and it's our position that 2-303 provides that you appeal to the designative administrative authority, and then after the designative administrative authority renders a decision on the interpretation and application, it goes back down to the code enforcement board who has a quasi-judicial hearing on the facts and the interpretation as provided by whatever designated administrative authority issued on that decision. In this particular case, 64.04 was tacked on to the appeal process, and 2-204 was also tacked on to the appeals process. I think that's improper pursuant to your own code, but nonetheless, we're here, and I am going to get into the substance of our arguments. I just had to make a record because if this case goes up before the circuit court, I do have to challenge that issue as well. First and foremost, with respect to Charles Fitz and the Wagners, the other appellants in this case, they are acting in conformity with the code. You'll see it's single-family residential structure or multifamily residential structure. Those are permitted uses within the zoning districts that are at play in this case, and both of them are acting in accordance with the code with respect to that particular issue. The issue in this case is disalleged ban on guest house and transient quarters within residential zoning districts. We submit to you today that the law or the ordinance as drafted on this particular issue is that it's unconstitutionally and impermissibly vague, to the point where it's unenforceable. The vagueness test, as determined by the courts in the state of Florida, is whether a statute or ordinance gives a person of ordinary intelligence fair notice of what constitutes forbidden conduct. Here, no person of ordinary intelligence has fair notice of what constitutes this supposed forbidden guest house and transient quarters. Going to an analysis, you have to take a look at your own code. You have guest house and transient quarters defined as any structure, including converted dwellings, in which less than 10 bedrooms, with or without meals, is rented or otherwise provided for compensation to transient, for their transients, for their temporary care and lodging. Now, the word transient is defined, and transient is defined as a guest in transient occupancy. Transient occupancy is also defined, and transient occupancy is defined as any occupancy for which it is the intention of the parties that the guest occupancy will be temporary. Temporary is not defined in the code. Temporary, as a matter of definition, and as Mr. McGary in his official interpretation conceded, is it's anything that's not permanent. Anything not permanent could be 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, five years, 10 years, anything less than forever. And for that reason, anybody who goes through and reads these definitions and how it applies to the particular zoning district would know that they are not allowed to rent their house on a temporary basis, essentially. And it's too vague. There's no way somebody can know whether that means less than 30 days. There is one modicum of guidance on the particular issue of how long you could potentially rent your house for in order for it to be classified as this forbidden guest house and transient quarters. And that is right in the definition of transient occupancy. It states as follows, "There is a rebuttable presumption that the occupancy is transient when the structure, building, dwelling, accommodation, or portion thereof is rented to guests for periods of less than 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less, or which is advertised or held out to the public as a place regularly rented to guests for periods of less than 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less." Now, when you read that, one might come to the conclusion that you're not allowed to rent your house less than 30 days, but that's inaccurate. That's not what your code said. Your code does not say a guest house and transient quarters is when you rent your house for a period of less than 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less. Rather, what it says is, "There is a rebuttable presumption that an occupancy is transient if you rent your house for 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less." Rebuttable presumption, by definition, means that it could, that you could theoretically rent your house for less than 30 days and still not be a guest house and transient quarters. There is nothing in your code that defines or allows anybody, or gives any guidance to anybody, how they are able to rebut this presumption that their house is a forbidden guest house and transient quarters because they're renting their property for a particular period of time. And conversely, on the other hand, you will look, when you read the code, there is nothing that says in the code that you're allowed to rent your property for more than 30 days either. As set forth in your own code, it says whatever is expressly, whatever is not expressably as listed as permitted is forbidden in the city of Vero Beach. And nothing in your code says you can rent your property for more than 30 days. You're just not allowed to rent it on a temporary basis. Temporary basis, again, anything less than permanent, five years, 10 years, one year, 60 days, 30 days, two days. All of those pursuant to your code right now could theoretically be precluded. Now, Mr. McGary, in his definition or in his official interpretation, he made reference to the Florida statutes, specifically Florida statute, Section 509.013, subsection 4A. And he uses that in an effort to bolster his interpretation that transient is a period for less than 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less. But there is an important distinct difference between the Florida statutes and the city code of ordinances. Actually, there's a couple important distinct differences, but the main point I want to bring up is that the very definition that Mr. McGary references says that it's an establishment which is rented to guests more than three times in a calendar year for periods of less than 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less. So if the goal was to copy the state statute as it pertains to that particular issue, it did not occur. Yours is anything rented for 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less. State statute says an establishment which is rented to guests more than three times in one calendar year for a period of 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less. And also, another key difference between the Florida statute and city code of ordinances is that the Florida statute, as it pertains to transient rentals or short-term rentals, deals with licensing. So the definitions, as you read in the Florida statutes, they make sense with respect to that, in that context, the licensee context. For instance, it says that rental, if it's the intention of the parties, you don't have to actually rent it out if it's advertised for a period of being rented for less than 30 days or one calendar month. You can imagine that they still want people to obtain a license if they are trying to advertise that they are going to rent short-term rentals. That's why the definitions in the state statute the way they are. When you put it into this context, such as it's a rebuttable presumption that 30 days or one calendar month, if you're advertising it, that it's a rebuttable presumption that your house is transient, when you put it in this context, it actually ends up being an impermissible restriction, an unconstitutional restriction, on speech, which is a violation of the First Amendment. Now, if you disagree with my position that the ordinance 2015-02, which amends Chapter 60, the definition section, renders the city code of ordinances, at least as it pertains to the ban on guest house and transient quarters, unconstitutionally vague or impermissibly vague, you still have another hurdle, and that hurdle is preemption. Florida statute, Section 509.032, subsection 7B states, "A local law, ordinance, or regulation may not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate the duration or frequency of vacation rentals unless such local law, ordinance, or regulation was adopted on or before June 1, 2011." The definitions, guest house, transient quarters, was amended by ordinance number 2015-02. The definition of transient was amended pursuant to ordinance 2015-02. The definition transient occupancy was added in ordinance number 2015-02. All of which, when taken together, read into the code and applying it to this situation, is a law that was adopted on or after June 1, 2011. It was adopted in 2015, this ordinance was, and it attempts to regulate the duration or frequency of short-term rentals. The state legislature has said that you cannot do that. It's not, it's, they have expressly preempted local governments from ruling on this particular issue. Now, it may be argued, and I believe that's what Mr. McGary's point was in his official interpretation, that the supposed ban on guest house and transient quarters has always been banned for a period, I think of approximately 30 to 40 years. However, if you take a look at the ordinance, or I should say, your city code prior to 2015-02, that ordinance that was enacted this year, transient was never defined, and there was never a cross-reference to Section 509.03, 013, which is the state statute on transient lodging or public lodging establishments. In fact, there was already a ruling, your code enforcement board of this city, prior to the 2015-02 ordinance, issued a decision on whether there was a ban on guest house and transient quarters, and determined that it was impermissibly vague because transient wasn't defined, a number of things weren't defined in there that would give anybody who read the code enough guidance in order to find out what exactly was prohibited within a residential zoning district. It went up before the appellate division of our 19th Judicial Circuit, and the appellate division affirmed per curiam, which is, I know we talked about it, the planning and zoning board, per curiam's just a fancy way of saying, "We agree," but they didn't issue a written opinion. Here, there could be no dispute that the ordinance changes the city code of ordinances and how it applies to this supposed ban on guest house and transient quarters. That ordinance was in 2015, which is approximately four years after the alleged deadline, well, not alleged deadline, the deadline set by the state legislature, which said, "This city cannot do this." And it was enacted anyways. For that reason, the supposed ban on guest house and transient quarters cannot be upheld. The other issue that I want to touch upon, and I touched upon it briefly before, was that this violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and Florida Constitution. This is an impermissible restriction on speech. You will see in your definition of transient occupancy, you don't just ban, or I shouldn't say ban, you don't just attempt to restrict rentals for a period of 30 days or one calendar month, whichever is less. You also restrict people and their right to advertise or hold out to the general public that they're renting their property for a period of 30 days or one calendar month. That's a content-based restriction, which is simply saying, "We're not just banning all speech on the issue. We're banning speech as it pertains to this particular issue and as to people who said it." This is a content-based restriction. And content-based restrictions aren't always impermissible. Sometimes they are permissible in limited circumstances. However, in this particular case, there's no, that circumstance doesn't exist. If you read your code, your own code says this, that there's a rebuttable presumption, if you rent your property for less than 30 days or one calendar month, that the occupancy is transient in nature. A rebuttable presumption, that in and of itself is not outlawed. You didn't outlaw it. Your code does not say that rentals for less than 30 days are banned. Matter-of-factly, in the city of Vero Beach, it just says there's a rebuttable presumption created. Yet, you also regulate any speech with regard to that. So that means you are regulating speech as it pertains to something that is not necessarily illegal or unlawful or forbidden in the city. You said it yourself, there is a rebuttable presumption. That presumption can be rebutted, yet you say that if somebody advertises on that issue or holds out to the general public on this issue, that they're not allowed to do so. For that reason, it's a regulation on, it's an impermissible violation of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and the Florida Constitution as it pertains to free speech. The last issue I wanted to touch upon is, before I even started, there was a distinct difference between the Charles Fitz case and the Kent Wagner and Charles Wagner and Gabriel Wagner case. And it deals with the citations involved. Charles Fitz, pretty straightforward. You issued the citations, supposed to go before the code enforcement board, and the code enforcement board, that proceeding was abated pursuant to the code for this appellate process. Now, the Wagner's a little bit different because what happened in the Wagner's case is they were initially cited for a violation of, and please bear with me, it was on April 7th of 2015, they received a violation for code section 60.11 and 61.02. 61.02 applies to a different residential district than what our clients have property in. So therefore, they cannot cure or correct a violation that does not exist. So what happened during the appeal process, when there was a challenge of the interpretation and the application of that particular code provision, during the appeal process, on July 20th, 2015, an amended citation was issued. And that amended citation changed the applicable code sections, or the alleged violations of the code sections, and said 60.11, 60.06, 61.36, and 61.37, changing the applicable residential district in, that's at play in the Wagner's appeal. The issue becomes, though, is that it gives, it gave, that amended citation gave the Wagner's an opportunity to cure the violation, but the violation date, the cure date, was April 21st, 2015, which is almost three months prior to the amended citation being issued. So that means they were supposed to correct a violation in the past. They'd have to invent a time machine to go back to April to somehow act in accordance with the code. Now, Mr. McGary, in his official interpretation, said that Section 61.36 and 61.37 should have been cited in the original citations. I have no idea how he could have possibly have said something like that. And any amendments to the citation are immaterial. I have no idea how he could have possibly determined that without any factual evidence whatsoever. What seems to happen is, this seems to be a situation where doesn't like the result of the case, so we're just going to change the rules as we go. To cite the Wagner's or to uphold any citation against the Wagner's would be a gross violation of due process. Due process is simply this, notice and an opportunity to be heard. In this particular case, they put them on notice that they were in violation of a code section pertaining to a residential district they don't own property in. How are they supposed to amend a violation that does not exist, or amend a, or correct a violation that does not exist? Then, an amended citation is issued, and it required the Wagner's to, then time travel, I guess, to go back in time and try to correct the violations prior to the amended citation being issued. It's a violation of due process, and for that reason alone, you can't uphold the citation as it pertains to the Wagner's. I think what's going on here is a little bit of a government overstep into the short-term rental issue. It wasn't my call. The state legislature has determined that they are going to control short-term rentals. This is not an issue for local governments. Yet, this local government, respectfully, of course, is trying to ban or regulate short-term rentals in this particular case. Now, I'm not saying there's not, I'm not saying there's not a way you could have regulated it, you just didn't regulate it in accordance with the Florida statutes. You violated the Florida statutes by enacting this ordinance. And for all the reasons that I said, it's unconstitutionally and impermissibly vague, it's been preempted by Florida statutes, it's a violation of due process because of the amended citation in the case of the Wagner's, it's an impermissible restriction on free speech and freedom of expression in accordance with the United States and Florida Constitution, is the interpretation should be overturned and that this, the ordinance number 2015-02 should be struck down. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the planning director presentation, or his representative.
Good morning, folks. Before I get started, I'm going to get this turned on here. Do we need to turn this television on?
It's on.
Okay.
You can just touch the mouse.
[inaudible]
My name is Nick Zabresny. I'm with the Lofts as a Frost, Van and Boom. I'm here today on behalf of Mr. McGary. I just want to start by first addressing the scope of today's proceeding and kind of how we got here. When an individual receives a citation from a code enforcement officer pursuant to the code, section 2-303, they can request a hearing, an evidentiary hearing, in front of the code enforcement board. They can also file an appeal. They can appeal the code enforcement officer's interpretation and/or application of the relevant code provisions that were the genesis of the citation. And that's what occurred here. That appeal went to the planning director, who's Mr. McGary. Now, Mr. McGary rendered a decision, but the decision was relating to the code enforcement officer's interpretation and application of the relevant code provisions. Once that decision was rendered, the aggrieved parties in this matter appealed to the planning and zoning board pursuant to 64.04 of the code. Again, the scope is still the decision related to, Mr. McGary's decision related to the code enforcement officer's interpretation and application of the code provision. After the planning and zoning board issued its decision, which by the way unanimously upheld Mr. McGary's decision, and you will see in one of the exhibits that are included is the decision from the planning and zoning board. The aggrieved party then appealed to the council, and the scope, again, does not change. And the reason I'm saying that, and I know I sounded like a broken record going over and over and over again, but these arguments you've heard today regarding unconstitutionality, First Amendment vagueness, preemption, are well beyond the scope of today's proceeding. Today's inquiry is limited to the decision regarding the officer's interpretation and application of the code provisions. The issues of preemption are not included in that, the same with any constitutional challenge. So I just want to start with that framework and go from there, just so we understand, again, what the actual inquiry is here today. As you heard, there are two parties or properties that are at issue here today. Both were cited for operating a guest house and transient quarters in residential zoning districts. One is the Fitz matter, and that was a property that was in R-1A zoning district. The second is the Wagner property, which is in RM-10 zoning district, which is, RM-10 is multiple-family residential, R-1A is single-family residential. So they're both residential zoning districts. Pursuant to the Vero Beach code, as Mr. Rota Beck indicated, it's unlawful for a building to be used in a manner that is not permitted by the particular zoning district, and no use shall be allowed in a zoning district unless it is specifically permitted by the code. So that, again, is really the inquiry here, okay? Are guest houses and transient quarters a use that is permitted in the RM-10, which is multiple-family residential districts, and the R-1A, which is a single-family residential districts? Hopefully, I can get this to work here. Ms. Fock, do I have to press something specifically for this to?
Yes, I'll change it for you.
Well, what I have here is Section 6102, and that is the permitted uses in R-1A zoning district. zoning district. And that, this is included in the evidence that I submitted, it's one of the four documents. As you can see, in R1A zoning district, guest house and transient quarters is not a permitted use. It's Section 61.03 outlining the conditional uses in the R1A zoning district. And I will follow up with the second page. Again, as you can see, guest houses and transient quarters are not conditional uses or permitted uses in the R1A zoning district. Section 61.36 sets forth the permitted uses in the RM10 zoning district. I'll give you all a second to look at that, but as you can see, guest houses and transient quarters are not a permitted use in the RM10 zoning district. And Section 61.37, it starts here at the bottom and carries over into the second page, guest houses and transient quarters are not conditional uses in the RM10 zoning district. And Mr. McGary's decision makes this very clear, but I wanted to go through these particular provisions and demonstrate to the council that not only are guest houses and transient quarters--
The microphone.
I'm sorry. Guest houses and transient quarters are not permitted in either of the zoning districts that are at issue here. And quite frankly, guest houses and transient quarters are not permitted in any residential zoning district in Vero Beach. So again, that truly by itself is the inquiry. That is the genesis of the code enforcement officer's citation in both the Fitz and Wagner matter. I did include in the materials provided, the exhibit, one of the exhibit includes both the citation, or excuse me, the decision, Mr. McGary's decision in the Wagner matter and Fitz matter, and I want to briefly touch upon his decision as to the code enforcement officer's interpretation and application of the code provisions. The decision makes clear first that Mr. McGary relied on nothing but truly the plain language of Chapter 60, which is the definition section, and specifically, the definition of guest house and transient quarters as set forth in the Vero Beach Code. Instead of putting on the screen the actual Chapter 60 definition, what I did here is, this is actually a copy of 2015-2, the ordinance, and it has the guest house and transient quarters definition contained in it, which is exactly the definition that is set forth in Chapter 60. But the reason I chose and would like the council to consider this is, although it is beyond the scope of today's inquiry, you can clearly see that there were no substantive changes to the definition of guest house in transient quarters. Now, in analyzing this definition, Mr. McGary, as I stated, relied on the plain meaning and ordinary and common usage of the terms located in the guest house and transient quarters definition, and specifically, the terms transient and temporary. And if you look at the bottom of Page 1 of Mr. McGary's decision in the Fitz matter, it sets forth, again, transients, and cites the Webster's Dictionary definition for the plain meaning and common understanding of that term, which is one that is transient, transient guests, passing through or by a place with only a brief stay or sojourn, or staying somewhere only a short time. Thus, in the context of the referenced code sections, a transient is a person or guest that is only staying for a brief stay or only a short time. This comports with the common understanding and usage of the words employed. Continuing, Mr. McGary on the second page, would be the second paragraph of the second page of that decision, again, cites, references the term temporary, which again is in the definition of guest house transient quarters, and cites the dictionary for the meaning of the term temporary, which is lasting for a limited time, intended to be used for a limited amount of time, not permanent. Thus, the use of the term temporary in care and lodging reinforces the nature and characteristics of the subject to land use, guest house, and transient quarters as limited in duration. And at the bottom, you will see in that decision, Mr. McGary states, "In consideration of all the foregoing, it is my interpretation of the relevant code sections that the use guest house and transient quarters is not permitted or allowed, or allowed land use in R1A district, and the same conclusion is made for the RM10." And my purpose of going through that is, again, to show, to kind of counter this notion that there was reliance on anything other than the plain meaning, ordinary language and common usage of the terms that are contained and set forth in the definition of guest house transient quarters in Chapter 60 of the code. I've already made this point, but I will say again, the Planning and Zoning Board's decision to unanimous, unanimous decision, upholding Mr. McGary's interpretation in both of these matters as submitted as evidence for this council's consideration. And finally, I just want to address a few points that were brought up by Mr. Rotaback. The first is this idea that somehow Mr. McGary relied on Florida statute, Section 509, in rendering his decision. And again, I would ask the council to please refer to the decision, specifically, the top of the second page of the Fitz decision. And you will see that the reference to 509 is not used as a basis to support the decision. The decision has already been made prior to that on the bottom of Page 1 as to the plain ordinary meaning of the word transients. The reference to 509 is just, again, in further example. It's used merely as an example to show that even the state's legislature understands the definition of transient to mean what was already stated in the decision. So it's merely an example. It's not in reliance, or wasn't relied on, and the idea that somehow this, either Mr. McGary or the council attempted to rely on, on this 509 statute, I would say is false. The second is the argument, again, of preemption. Now, I would, again, go back to what I first said, that is beyond the scope of the proceedings here today. But since it was brought up, I will leave that up there until I'm done. But you can see that Mr. McGary relied solely on the definition of guest house and transient quarters. That is the amendment to that definition that was relied on, and there are no substantive changes made in 2015. And that was the specific ordinance that Mr. Rotaback referenced, the 2015-2 ordinance. And again, no substantive changes. Finally, I would just like to address the issue that was raised regarding due process and notice with respect to the Wagner matter. While Mr. Rotaback makes somewhat of a valid argument as far as whether or not this was amended, again, we talked about the scope of this proceeding. The analysis is whether the code enforcement officer and Mr. McGary's decision regarding that interpretation was a correct interpretation and application of the code provisions. This is not a decision as to the final merits of the issuance of the citation. Once the appeal process has finalized, the matter will go back before the code enforcement board, and that is a valid defense if, if Mr. Rotaback is able to substantiate that, to be made in front of the code enforcement board, but not in front of the council here today. So with that being said, Mr. McGary's decision is very straightforward, easy to follow, and I would ask this council to do exactly what the Planning and Zoning Board did, and that is to uphold that decision. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Rotaback?
The interpretation and applicability of the code provisions is at issue in this case. Mr. Zabresny, respectfully, of course, got up and told you that you can only determine today whether guest house and transient quarters are permissible within the residential zoning district. It's not that simple. It's application and interpretation. You can make a determination that your own code is not specific enough about a particular issue. In fact, you're, Mr. Zabresny and Mr. Frost, the attorneys, in the Circuit Court case that's presently pending, have argued that the arguments pertaining to preemption and constitutionality are more appropriate for this forum than they are for the Circuit Court forum. We must exhaust these administrative remedies before we're allowed to go there. So, I'm a little perplexed now why I'm saying that we're not allowed to bring it up now, but rather, we should be bringing it up in Circuit Court instead. But, that's neither here nor there. Mr. Zabresny says, "Mr. McGary's interpretation relies upon the common usage of the terms." You'll notice there is no Webster Dictionary definition that says transient is 30 days or one calendar, is rental of your home for a period of 30 days and one calendar month, whichever is less. Rather, it is like anything else, temporary, not permanent. That could mean anything. When the common usage is so vague, you don't know what it means, you have to give guidance to your own citizens of the City of Vero Beach, so they know what they are allowed to do and what they are not allowed to do. If what you were intending to do was to ban all rentals for 30 days or less, then say that. Instead, what you did is, you said, "You can't, for compensation, rent your house to transients for temporary care and lodging," and then you define transients as anybody in transient occupancy, then transient occupancy is defined as any occupancy for which it's the intentions of parties that it's not permanent. Not permanent are the many wide variety of things I just said. One day, 30 days, 90 days, six years, all of those, by definition, are not permanent. I'm not permanent on earth. I'm going to die eventually. So is therefore, can I not be an owner either because I'm not going to be permanently at that location? You get the idea. And obviously, that's an extreme example, but that's what your code says. And that's the point that we've been trying to make today. That's what your code says. If the City of Vero Beach put in its municipal code of ordinances, "No speeding allowed in this city," what would that mean to you? And just think about it. Without reference to anything else, what does it mean? No speeding allowed. Some people will be driving 35 miles an hour in compliance with the law. Others will be driving 80, because speeding by itself is not specific enough. Similarly, temporary or transient, in its common usage, is not specific enough to know, a person of ordinary intelligence to know what is permissible and what is impermissible. Now, regard to Mr. Zabresny's argument as it pertains that there was no reference to Section 509 in the official interpretation. If you take a look, and it was a while ago, there was an informal interpretive memorandum that was created, and it's in your own public records back in June of 2011, and in support of the city's position that we have always banned guest house and transient quarters, there is a specific reference to Section 509.13, and it spells out that there's a 30-day limit in there, and that's where we came up with our 30 days. That's Mr. McGary's words, not mine. Now, with respect to Mr. Zabresny's argument as it pertains to code enforcement, and how it's the proper venue to determine the merits of the Wagner's citation, your code says that they are limited to fact-finding. Questions of law, applicability, interpretation are for the City Council, the designative administrative authority, which is, I guess in this case, Mr. McGary, the Planning and Zoning Board, and the council today. You determine whether due process has been given to Mr. Wagner's. I don't think that's a proper venue, since you're, all they can determine, the code enforcement board can determine whether a citation was issued on this date and whether it's a violation of such citation, not whether the citation itself violates due process. That's you guys. That's your call to make. The code enforcement board has not been given that authority under your code. And that's why the arguments, at least insofar as they pertain to the Wagner's, as far as the amended citation is concerned, is properly before you, and would not be properly before the code enforcement board. In summary of all my position, read the code. The code is impermissibly vague, and even if you disagree with that permission, even if you disagree with my interpretation of it, or my position on that, it's also been preempted by state statute. And even if you disagree with that, you still create an impermissible restriction on the First Amendment rights to free speech and freedom of expression. Thank you very much for listening to me today.
All right. Rebuttal?
Just briefly, thank you. Mr. Rotaback continues to reference this 30-day, you know, cutoff point. He keeps saying that there's this 30-day idea. I just would submit to the council that, again, the scope of this inquiry, of this council's inquiry today is Mr. McGary's decision as to the code enforcement officer's interpretation and application. Nowhere in Mr. McGary's decision will you see any reference to a 30-day requirement. So I'd ask y'all to keep that in mind. Second point was just brought up on rebuttal as to some memorandum that has not been presented here today as evidence. And again, I keep going back to this, but the scope of the inquiry here today, Mr. McGary's decision, Mr. McGary's decision in no way relies on 509. It only references that particular statute as an example after the conclusion, the necessary conclusion was already made within that decision. And finally, I continue to assert the fact that, yes, the code enforcement board certainly has the authority, and quite frankly, regularly decides whether or not folks have received the proper notice of the citation, as well as the opportunity to correct that. So again, I would submit that the, the claim that there was not proper notice is something that should be submitted to the board, and quite frankly, I would bring up the fact, again, that guest houses and transient quarters are not permitted in any residential zoning district. So regardless if you are cited for the R1A zoning district or the RM10 zoning district, it's still a residential zoning district, and guest houses and transient quarters are not permitted uses. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mayor, Mayor Mr. Rotaback would get the last say.
Yes. I was going there.
Anything else?
Okay. All right. Appellant summation, please.
I'll keep it very brief, because I don't want to bore you, and I've said it ad nauseam today already. The City of Vero Beach Municipal Code of Ordinances does not give enough guidance to a person of ordinary intelligence to determine what exactly a guest house, a prohibited guest house and transient quarters is, not allowed to know what they're doing with their property. For that reason, it's impermissibly vague, and they should not be, nobody should be receiving any citations over it until that issue is fixed. The second issue is that even if you disagree with that, that this issue has been preempted by state law. It wasn't my call, it's the Florida legislature's call, that local governments are not to issue any regulations as pertains to the frequency or duration of short-term rentals. That's what they said. Ordinance number 2015 does just that. Ordinance number 2015-02 does just that. If you disagree with my arguments about preemption, they're still, in your definition of transient occupancy, there's an impermissible regulation and restriction on freedom of speech. You're not letting people advertise or hold out to the general public that they rent their property for less than 30 days or one calendar month. If they do, you're going to presume that there's transient occupancy, and they can receive a citation in an amount up to $500 per day for doing it. For all the reasons I said, the interpretation and applicability as determined by Mr. McGary should be overturned. 2015-02, ordinance number 2015-02 is improper, should not be upheld, and therefore, the citation should not be issued in these cases. Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes the appeal and the rebuttal. That moves us on to a council discussion. Is there a council discussion?
I have a few questions. If we're talking about what a reasonably intelligent person would believe is permissible or impermissible, for example, if they're running one of these bodies, would a reasonably intelligent person believe that they have to get a license in order to do that? intelligent person believe that they have to get a license in order to do that? Would they then call their local government to find out how to find out, how to obtain that license? And then would a reasonable person then be told, "We don't give those licenses because this is not permitted within our city by our code and ordinance?" So I hear what you're saying, but I also don't understand how a reasonably intelligent person who would be told, "No, that license is not permitted," would then not understand how that would be too vague for them to understand with regards to speeding and saying, "Oh, it's so vague, what is speeding?" Well, a reasonably intelligent person who has a driver's license in the state of Florida, passed a driving test that gives guidelines. If you don't see a permit and you're in this kind of area, for example, a residential neighborhood, you should not be going more than 30 miles per hour. So there are assumptions out there that reasonably intelligent people should be able to make. In my opinion, what we did with 2015-02 is clear up the authority of our planning director to interpret the code. That's what this body did. And for me, that's what he did. Planning and zoning process has an appeal. It went through. They upheld it. And for me, I'm upholding it because that's the authority that I, with my vote, vested in our planning director.
Mr. Old.
I completely go along with what Millie just said. I feel that there's been a long discussion about this. For no one to understand that they can't rent for 30 days, I find it unbelievable a little bit. And I think that the city is very much, has a practice of not letting them rent for 30 days or less, and it would, and the community is basically stepping up and saying, "That's what we'd like to have, and that's what we've been trying to implement here." So I feel the same way.
Mrs. Turner.
First of all, I want to start by saying I am opposed to short-term rentals, personally. I believe in home rule. I believe that the city has that right to determine what we want in our community. But the reality of the situation is that our code as originally drafted was deficient. Planning director, city attorney, they failed to modify the code prior to the enactment of the state statute in June of 2011. The shortfalls of the original ordinance were clear to everyone on the council that when we approved forward the modifications to that ordinance. And I believe that probably those modifications will be an issue for the court, whether that we're able to make those modifications to the ordinance following the state statute. And although Mr. McGary's interpretation may echo our preference for restricting 30 days or less rentals, it is not what the code says. Now, our laws must be clear. This hearing's not to create laws, but to interpret the law as it stands, and therefore, I will object.
All right. I believe that, in effect, the word temporary stands, and I will make a motion. I move that based on the competent substantial evidence presented in the applicable code provisions, we affirm the Planning and Zoning Board's decision upholding the planning director's interpretation of the subject land use regulation. Is there a second?
Yes.
Does this sound both the case of the Fritz and the Wagner, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's a good question. I'll ask for--
You can take two separate votes.
Probably better for the record.
This is for the first issue. I have a motion and a second. Mrs. Loth.
Mr. Old.
Yes.
Ms. Graves.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner.
No.
Mayor Winger.
Yes, it passes 3-1. All right, regarding the second issue, do I need to read the second issue or not?
I believe that's the Wagner case. That's the Wagner case.
Okay, it's Application A15050603. In regard to that, I move that based on the competent substantial evidence presented in the applicable code provisions, we affirm the Planning and Zoning Board decisions upholding the planning director's interpretation of the subject land use regulation. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mrs. Graves seconded it. Would you call? I call a motion.
Mr. Old.
Yes.
Ms. Graves.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner.
No.
Mayor Winger.
Yes, it passes 3-1. All right, that concludes today's business unless there's something further. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, we are adjourned.